To ask our prayer for today, so if everybody would stand.
Dear Almighty Father, I just thank you again for the chance to be here and serve you, Lord. Thank you for our city, thank you for our citizens, Lord. I thank you for all the organizations and stuff attached to the city, Lord, that keep our community going. And I just pray that we all work together, have a single goal in your purpose and mine as we move forward. Give us the wisdom and knowledge we need to make decisions and just help us remember that we're doing it for you. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Press the flag, attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody to our council meeting today. Does everybody had a chance to look at the minutes? Got a motion and a second on the minutes, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Anybody had a chance to review the payments of accounts?
Motion approved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to pay the bills, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Okay, ordinances and resolutions. Excuse me. Resolution twenty eighteen dash forty-three, rescinding and repealing resolution twenty sixteen dash eighteen, which authorized application for SRF money for the wastewater treatment to allow modifications, authorizing the city clerk to sign the required documents in the mayor's absence.
Well, the original resolution was written, the mayor was the authorized signee, and of course during his absence, there's still invoices that have to be paid. So this is simply allows me to sign those invoices.
Third.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Speaking on that on behalf of the mayor, I think he is at home now. As most of you know, he has suffered a heart attack a little over a week ago. Had surgery on Thursday evening. And do you have an update on?
I spoke with him this morning, he's at home, as you alluded to. He's, of course, still weak, just nothing else but being in the hospital for a week. But he sounded good, I think he's on the road to recovery. He said he goes back to Birmingham in about six weeks. And he just wanted me to pass along all his thanks to everyone, prayers and thoughts, and his ordeal. So it sounded like he'll be fine to me.
Let's continue to keep him and Donna in our prayers. Okay, moving on to number two, resolution twenty eighteen dash forty-four, authorizing application for FY twenty-nine nineteen airport improvement grant and authorize the city clerk to sign the necessary documents.
This is our annual airport grant that we do, this is for the April, I believe, isn't it?
This is for the April, and this is the same thing, just lie, you sign it, get it up correct, and I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Okay, continued business, further discussion concerning modification of the subdivision regulations. I believe the meeting we had previously scheduled with the planning commission was canceled. So, do we have?
Well, I think before you discuss them in here, you really need to reschedule your planning commission meeting because those changes actually come through the planning commission and then are either voted up or down by the council. So I think you probably need to table that till you can reschedule that planning commission meeting.
Has that meeting been rescheduled, Jimmy?
It will be rescheduled for this coming month.
Okay.
May I say something? If any of you have specific suggestions that you would like to offer to the planning commission, if you could jot those down or send me an email with it, I certainly would appreciate that. And that will give us something to start with and looking at. So I gave each one of you a copy of those subdivision regs a couple of weeks, well, about a month ago, I guess now. And so hopefully you've had a chance to look those over and decide what changes you guys would like to see implemented.
When is the meeting, Jimmy?
On the calendar, but it'll be the second Tuesday in next month.
Second Tuesday in November?
Yes.
And it will be here?
It'll be the thirteenth. We'll have it in the conference room in there unless we have an overflowing crowd and we come in here.
What time?
Six.
Six o'clock.
Okay, number four, on new business, is to authorize a wetland study on the Carden property to be performed by Wildland Services LLC in the amount of $2,980 and authorize city clerk to sign the necessary documents.
This is the same group that did the study for us on the property above Earthcranes. And as we all know, that property's got the Allen Spring on it that goes down across the property on the Bullcrash property. So they're gonna have to address that to see what the impact would be on any development around that. So I'd make a motion to go ahead and authorize that.
Second.
So we got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Okay. Next is to authorize agreement with MRS consultants for the archaeological assessment of the proposed reroute of the gravity sewer line for $4,000 and to authorize the city clerk to sign necessary documents.
We had met with James Payton, I did, and of course, you know, we ran into the issue about the Indian relics, I suppose you would call it. And it was unclear, regardless of the amount of money we spent, whether or not we would get clearance. So James developed a plan basically to go around that. But even though we're attempting to go around it, since the area is sensitive up to this point, we're still gonna have to have this study. But he feels comfortable that this study will come back clear. And this is the same company that's done it before.
Now, ain't many studies that we already had.
We've had, we've had.
They did some years ago, whatever they did. Did they not?
I don't know about years ago. I think part of the problem was Aldoc started that project and they did not, as I understand, James, did not get clearance from the Alabama Archaeological Commission that is required, and therefore the project was stopped. And when we started the gravity line project, that was a necessary component of it. So that's how we ended up where we are today.
Motion approved.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Next is to authorize agreement with Jackson State University for forensic services. Okay, got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Next is authorize bids for a mixer at the wastewater treatment plant.
This budgeted item?
It's a booster minus.
And the upgrade though, it's, it's a.
What happened was, we had bought a new one when we had that $300,000 years ago. And this was, we used to spare that we had. And this one had been in there, and this one has been running right at eighteen or nineteen years. And sent it off to be repaired, and it's repaired, it's like $2,940. And a brand new is like $2,900, I mean, twenty-one thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. Only like $60 difference between a brand new and a repaired repair of this.
We just authorized a bid in the wastewater.
We got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Okay, we have activity permits, First Baptist Church Fall Festival from Second Street. I think we had talked about this last council meeting. This is for Sunday, October the twenty-eighth, from four forty-five until seven thirty PM. Okay. Do we need to do those at one time, or do?
What's the time zone?
Four forty-five to seven thirty. Okay, got a motion.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Okay, we also have an activities permit for the DeKalb County Democratic Party fundraiser to close Galt Avenue between First Street and Fifth Street. That would be tonight, five thirty to eight thirty.
Can we speak about that?
Yes.
Okay, this came to me Friday after, or Friday morning, that y'all wanted to know if we could do this. I spoke with Clerk Parker, she agreed to pay however many officers we have to pay to get this done. And I told her it wasn't just as simple as closing the fourth, third and fourth street. We had to close the whole block down for truck traffic. And she agreed to pay the officers, and they agreed to pay the officers, yes, the Democratic Party. So I have all that set up, and we wanted to put it on the agenda for you guys, either approve it or disapprove it. So let's hear it now.
Is it a theater, correct?
Yes, that's a theater.
And the request was just to close that block?
Yeah, and I told her we just couldn't do that. We had to close the whole footprint, just like we did for Boon Day's car show and stuff. I think it's from five thirty to eight thirty, I think that's what they requested. So if y'all want to approve, that's fine, if y'all don't want to, I can call and tell you then you approve.
Well, you said it was at the theater?
Yes. But we're having to close from Fifth Street to First Street because of truck traffic.
Yes, but I don't know.
But it's out in the street too, right?
They were expecting a large crowd, and they've got somebody, one of the candidates, one of the state candidates coming in on a big bus or something like that. They were expecting kind of a spillover crowd out of the theater, I think, and was wanting to do something on the sidewalk. But they've offered the paper, the officers, the closed roads and all that and stuff, so.
I don't know, guess. We've always tried to stay away from political things as much as we can, but we've kind of got into it about.
Well, I think that what we did several years ago, correct me if I'm wrong, Andy, is that there had been requests by political parties to use some of our facilities for free. And we, the council took the position that we were not gonna allow any party to use any of our facilities for free. And as I understand it, they have rented the theater. And I think ironically, I believe at the same time, the Republican Party has rented the pavilion. So we're gonna have, you can go to one or both, or you can stand and be a centrist in the middle of the park and not take either side.
The cross park.
And just be at the cross park.
I'm gonna have a tenant at Old Matt Co. I'm putting up a tenant at Old Matt Co, so just here.
Put a tenant at Old Matt Co, and you can sell guns to both sides. But anyway, I'm over the second amendment. Anyway. I'm over the second amendment. There is no legal problem because you're renting it the property, and we have closed that road for other organizations that we, I'm not saying that you should do it, but I'm just saying that legally it's not a problem because this is the same, the same thing we have done for other entities that are not political, that we have rented the theater to. And I think probably the other ones hadn't offered to pay our extra police officers, if I'm not mistaken. Randy, if that's correct, so they're actually a little bit going above. But it's totally up to you whether you want to do it or not.
Well, let me say this, if we don't do it, I'm gonna need some guidance. And Randy's gonna need some guidance on when to say no. When have we done this?
The last time we did it was the prom, was it not? We do it for Boon Days, which that's some. We do it for Thursday.
Thursday.
We do it for the Halloween ball party.
I guess would be the prom that I can think of. We closed it down for several things that were city functions or sponsored.
I know that it's been turned down on several things, and if we open it up to this, what else are we gonna have to open it up to, to close the street down?
Have we turned it down before to do that? I don't recall that.
Well, I know when we, when we were planning the Pete the Cat thing, we decided not to do it at your recommendation.
We have a problem with the theater and all that.
Right.
And I'm going back, Andy, you was there, and we had some other things that we.
I know we've tried to stay away from having political candidates come and address the council.
We don't want to take sides.
Right.
We're gonna have to work whoever gets elected, and that's the thing we've always tried to do. And I don't know. I just kind of got a problem shutting it down.
Well, I think the concern you may have is, I mean, you got two parties denying renting facilities. And the parties that have rented that facility before have been able to close it down so not to cause traffic problems. And I suspect that at least one side's gonna think you're not working with them if you don't, so.
It's being advertised on the radio already that it is closed. It is closed.
What I told the lady that called me is we had to put it on the agenda today to have it passed or not pass it. So that's why we did the application.
But theaters reading.
Theater's been recorded.
I think it'll be raining in like this lot.
Yeah.
Well, it's hard to come up with guidelines on such a short notice.
Right.
I think we all got a little apprehension from years past when we had events happen in this town that were pretty embarrassing to all of us. And this is not that. But if you open up this to a political party, and I've got no problem with the Republican or Democratic Party, but let's say the Communist Party comes in here and wants to have a parade in downtown Fort Payne and uses this as a press, I'm just being devil's advocate here. Some bunch of knuckleheads somewhere will figure out how to wriggle way in here to have a demonstration of some kind, because it's the fad in the country right now. I have no problem with them renting the theater, doing what they need to do. I don't see that it's gonna be that big a crowd that's gonna spill out into three or four blocks of downtown. If it does, maybe it can go up to Grant. But my only concern would be that we're opening the door for something else later on. That's my fear, is that the climate that we're in right now politically, somebody will figure out, hey, we can go down, pay $1,000 for police officers, block street, and we can have an antifa rally. Or some of these knuckleheads that just love to go stir up trouble like we had years ago. And it took years to get that out of this country. It cost us thousands and thousands of dollars a year to deal with that. I'm just putting that out there as my reservation for doing that. Nothing against either party, I'm glad both of them are having it tonight, they're having it in city buildings, they're renting them, that's fine, so there's no conflict there. But I just, my reservation would be if we let somebody close down the street for a political rally, which political party that we don't, any of us agree with, is gonna come in and use that as leverage? That's just my thoughts on it.
You may not use the parking lot too across the street where Southern Properties possibly to do whatever they want to.
I don't have a problem with blocking off the side streets, you know, Second Street, Third Street, and then you got the parking lot next to the Maker's Market. There's some room there to have outside filler, but it's gonna rain anyway. I'm just, I'm gonna say one thing, because I'm good at doing that. But that's my reservation, is that this would potentially give us the ability to have to address this other deal later on. But when you let them do that, why can't I?
Right.
I think whatever the answer is, we need to come up with some guidelines. What do you think, Randy?
Well, yeah, I think we need to have some guidelines, and it sure does. I'm just hesitant to close the main road. I just, you know, for people that already have the theater rented, you know.
So you block it off like we did for the Star, when we did Alabama Star there, we not put some barricades out there and just possibly in case it?
No, you can do that, you still have to have some officers out there.
Yeah, okay.
You're gonna have more officers, and it's gonna be at night too.
For that, yeah. Okay.
Well, your policy's either pretty much gonna have to be, if you rent it and ask for that, and it's reasonable, you do it, or you don't do it for anybody.
I think the only reason that it was closed for the prom is because they were going across the street to the building. And it was a safety issue, all the kids going across the street.
And I don't have a problem just like doing the, what we're, uh, trick or treat.
Yeah, that's a community function.
I don't have a bit of a problem with that. That's like a city function.
Yeah, just.
From what I just said, I'd make a motion, we deny that.
You don't have to make a motion, you just don't approve it.
I don't approve it.
Okay.
Die for lack of a motion.
So you gonna call a kick?
I would. That's nothing against the party want, it's just the fact that it opens the door for somebody else to come in that could possibly be disruptive to our community.
Right.
I agree.
Had we known sooner than today, then we could have, you know, looked at that and seen what kind of provisions were needed to make, so.
So you can work on those, and?
What's involved in closing the street?
Tim and I has put out all of our.
No, I mean for you, you have to call Montgomery or give permission or anything.
They, their words to me was, as long as you have enough folks that actually physically close it down and maintain it for whatever project you're gonna do, that you can do it. He said, but you gotta understand, if it goes wrong, it's on your head, so that's what he told me.
And a proper thing to do. But what happens about these trucks that have permits that have a designated route? Didn't that come up in the past about?
They can't travel at nighttime, normally they won't let them travel on the weekends.
If their permit says you go up Vald Avenue and turn right, that's what they have to do.
Yeah. They have road use routes that they can only use.
Okay, moving along. Number nine is to authorize the official Boon Days Committee. These are the guidelines that we give out last council meeting to everybody.
About three pages from the back, there's an outline. I think Don had passed that out, you know, we discussed it at a work session last night. Only thing that changed on it, I think Don had no city employees, he and I talked, and we agreed that we would remove that, because I think some, been some discussion about maybe Mike being on with the meeting. So, but that's it. Y'all, what you need to do is adopt this format, and if you wanna put two of your own in either way with the next lead, you know, think about it in the meantime, never mind if you wanna do it.
I think this is something that we've got to do with the amount of money that we're spending on this. Again, accountability.
Yes.
There's been no accounting, you know, guidelines followed, there's been no agenda, there's been no minutes in the meeting, and that's.
So we need minutes, we need accountability, and it's something that we need to do. So I would make a motion to adopt it.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried.
You wanna point those or? Wait.
Number ten. Budget adjustment to assist the Patriots Park project.
This is the sprinkler system, we got a quote, Johnny and I met with Lee Buffington. Lee prepared a proposal for us for the irrigation system at Patriots Park, which is city property. You know, at one time it was listed to the Vipdug, then it came back under the city. Patriots Park, the board itself, is actually just tasked with raising money and developing the park, but it is city property. So Lee gave us a quote. The first thing he knocked off was $5,368, that's his gift toward the project. But it came in at $13,598. The Water Works Board agreed to pay for the materials at $5,038. And then Johnny and I discussed it with some of you about taking some of the DC gas contribution we got and put for this. So it left us just a little $5,000 shy. But basically this money would all go into special appropriations, whatever, and then we would write that check out. So we would have to do an adjustment to authorize that. So if y'all are good with that, it's gonna cost the city about $1,000, $7,500 of the DC gas contributions, and then the Water Works Board is paying for materials. The system is in, and they're currently putting topsoil in now, should be set up in the next week or so. So hopefully by the end of this month, we'll have grass over there, and the irrigation system will be in. The water department did put the water into the property, set a meter, set a big faucet for us, and put the connection in for the sprinkler system. So it's ready to finish up, but we just need to formally authorize this adjustment to spend that money for it. So I'd make that motion.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'd just like to say that that project looks really good. I'm just glad that we've taken it.
Looking really good.
For, where are we on the monuments themselves?
The board is supposed to meet in the very near future to make a determination on what they're actually gonna go with on the large monuments. The original design called for eleven foot high by twelve inch thick, by four foot wide, black granite or marble that was having to be imported. They have since gone back and agreed to cut that down to eight feet, about eight inches, by four feet. And Tyler is gonna bring that before the rest of the board, and there's a discussion right now to maybe shift that back to gray marble or granite, which we can get domestically considerably less price, and maybe get it in quicker and finish the project. The project right now, everything there is paid for, there is still about $40,000 in the bank. They're continuing to raise money, they're on a push right now, this winter, to do pavers and benches and whatnot. If people wanna do things for Christmas for family members, they can buy a brick or something like that. So they're trying to get that push on for that. But we should have grass on, it should be finished in the next two months, other than the big monuments being put on the paves. So it's getting real close.
You know when they're gonna start the pavers? I've had a couple people ask me.
Parts putting them down?
Yeah.
I think you got 200 in already, so I think the plan is to order enough blanks that they can go ahead and put the paver walk in, and then they can go and take a blank out and put one in as they get some more in. So I'm thinking that'll be the decision made at the next board meeting also, is when they go ahead and get the walk for the pavers is done now. The Smith boys did a great job on that, stamped concrete, the city guys did a great job signing over the gate, building the gates and all the metal over there. So we're, we should be hopefully ready to finish that thing and dedicate it by Memorial Day. That's the hope, next spring, we can have it finished, finished. And it should be well on its way to have grass growing on it, look a lot better by Veterans Day, which is the middle of next month, so we're getting there.
Thanks Buck and Tim, everybody that's worked on it and pulled together. That looks good.
It's gone a long ways since last year, and I appreciate everybody's help work on that. Our welding crew did an outstanding job on those rails over there, they are beautiful.
I'd just like to encourage everyone to buy a paver, just be a part.
Where do you get purchased?
There's a website, I can't remember the.
I've got some of the pamphlets I will bring and leave with Joanne up front. And all you have to do is take that pamphlet, fill it out, and it will tell you how many spaces, how many lines, so you can kind of get on paper and write it out, what you want on there, and then work it in. I think there's sixteen characters per line, three lines on the standard, they're a hundred dollars a brick, $200 for a double sized brick. And I've got a lot of people that are getting doubles and putting multiple family members on there. You can buy a bench for $3,500, there's several different ways that you can sponsor that park down there. But the brick is the simplest way, and that's what I did last year, is I bought them for Christmas present for some of my family members, so it's a good deal, lasts forever. But we'll get you some brochures and put downstairs with Joanne, and you can get them at Tyler Wilkes, the revenue. And you can get them at Tyler Wilk's, the revenue office. The BFW's got quite a few of them. There's, they're scattered around different places at town. Maybe we need to scatter them out again because it's just kind of died down. So, maybe we can get a bunch of them out and put a push on them.
No, I got, I got a couple more things before we go with that. Tim brought it to our attention just right before we commenced the meeting. There's a mower at the airport, he'd like to declare a surplus. It's a grasshopper, 60-inch cut. I got the model number and serial number. So, he's got a potential buyer on it, so we can declare that surplus.
Second.
Not operational.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
And one more thing, Tamara, do we need to bring that up or would we all put it on next meeting or how do you handle that?
I guess we can go ahead and bring it up. I was hoping to do the doctor...
Bring them up to speed on them.
But I think everybody's seen them before. Y'all have previously approved the purchase of the Vulcan property and we've been trying to close that now for some time. But I've got a message from the title folks that there were some things that were not in the minutes that they wish would have been in our minutes specifically. So, I'm just gonna let y'all basically re-approve the purchase. Basically, what we have agreed to do in the, in the purchase contract is purchase the property for $243,805. We're paying half of that cost immediately. Vulcan is going to hold a mortgage as well as a promissory note for the remaining half, which is $121,902.50. That's payable within a year. And the upfront cost is payable immediately upon closing. So, if that meets with your approval, we'll get that specified in the minutes and hopefully get this deal done.
We've already, we've already done it, this is from the...
Oh, okay.
Motion.
Second. Johnny made a motion, I'll second.
We got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I thought you were saying we did.
Motion carried. Okay, is it all the other? So, we need a, need a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
We appreciate you guys coming. I guess before we dismiss, has anybody got anything that they'd like before we actually go into executive session?
I'd like to ask a question. This Vulcan property that you're buying, is that the rock quarry down there?
Property just south of... Do you know where the cemetery is up in the woods? If you go by the pulpwood yard, go across the railroad, go straight.
Is that the one that's tunneling under the mountain?
The rock quarry is to the north of where we're buying. We're not buying the rock quarry, we're buying the property south of the rock quarry.
Wrong ball, okay.
Right. It's, I think it's though buying the property, isn't it?
Chalmers.
Chalmers, yeah, though Chalmers, home place.
We're not buying the rock quarry.
No, no, Vulcan bought it from them and we're buying it from Vulcan. They decided they didn't need it after, after all, so we're buying it.
Anybody else? Again, we ask that you keep the mayor and his family in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you.